This is the Planning Board, Planning Board meeting of October 4th, 2022. My name is Kathy Barnard and the Chairman of the Planning Board. Let me introduce the other members. Over to my left, Doug Breskin. Sitting next to Doug is Von Dugan, then Peter Goodwin. Mike Hutter is the Vice Chairman of the Planning Board. And to my right, John Thurston, Brad Harriman, who is the Representative from the Board of Selectmen, and Julie Jacobs, who is one of our alternates. The first order of business is the continuation of a public hearing. This hearing was opened on September 9th, September 6th, 2022, and continued until last night for the ZBA. That was 10:03, and then until tonight with the Planning Board. This is at GMR Holdings of New Hampshire LLC and Wagon Wheel Trust, 1642 Center Street, Tax Map 009-001. This is a joint public hearing by the Planning Board and zoning board of appeals, adjustment application, and this is for a site plan review, case 2022-8, site plan review for personal wireless facility, and as I said, continued from September 6th. This will also continue the public hearing which we opened at our last hearing. On 10/3/22, the ZBA granted a special exception in height variance for the cell tower at 1642 Center Street. This tower will accommodate four carriers as well as a location for the emergency services. At the 9/6/22 Planning Board-ZBA joint meeting, the Planning Board granted the waivers requested for the site plan regulations, and then we were able to open the hearing. On September 25th, 2022, there was also a balloon float that was publicly noticed. So this is the continuation of the public hearing. If you could go through what you think is important to tell us about the site plan regulations and how you feel you have complied, please remember that all of the Planning Board members have had the information since the beginning of September. So as you're presenting, if you don't mind if we would ask some questions just to move things along. Okay. All right. Thank you. And you're on.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay.
My name is John Springer.
I'll start again. Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is John Springer. I'm an attorney with Springer Law in Portsmouth. I'm representing GMR Holdings for purposes of the site plan review tonight. I will try to stay on the high points, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. This is a 73-acre parcel in the residential agricultural zone, the RA zone. We are proposing a 160-foot tower, a monopole tower, with a base equipment at the base. Last night, we obtained a special exception from the ZBA in order to place the facility on this property, and we also obtained the height variance in order to do the 160-foot tower. I don't know if anybody watched that hearing. If you did, my condolences, but I shouldn't be flip about it. The ZBA did a very thorough job. I only want to note that as part of the process for the ZBA, we did a balloon float, and we did the, we submitted the visual study last night. And it's fair to say that there was very, very, very limited views of the tower on this site. It's an excellent site to minimize visual impact. And we had letters, we submitted letters of support from the police department and the fire department, both of whom believe that this site will help improve emergency communications. And it's also fair to say that there were comments from the floor on the first hearing we had, as well as a comment, or several comments from one of the ZBA members who lives up there about the need for coverage in that area. And so we obtained all that relief last night. Sheet Z1, which I have up on the board, gives a good overview of the property at issue. It also sets out the setbacks. We meet all the setbacks here. We're over 1,400 feet from Center Street where the proposed location of the tower is. We're 1,400 feet away. We have 185 feet to the nearest property line behind, if you will, where the compound area is. We have over 700 feet to the Evans House on the property, and we have over 600 feet to the, I guess it would be the Westerly property line. So we are in the interior of a large parcel. If you, I think one of the members went to the sidewalk on the board. Thank you. But we also had a sidewalk primarily with the ZBA at the same time as a balloon test. And it's fair to say, I think, when you get to where the compound location is, it's really remote, if you will. It is pretty clear that once that compound goes in, no one's going to be able to see it, no one's going to be able to hear it. You generate noise. I'll talk about that in a minute. And it's really well-suited, in our opinion, to host this facility. Verizon is the telecommunications carrier. GMR is the tower builder and will be the landlord. Verizon is a federally licensed carrier who has signed on for this project, and T-Mobile has also submitted a letter of support and a letter of interest. There is no water or sewer for this project. It's unmanned. The only utilities are tower, are power and electric, which already run up to the house and the property. The only traffic is one or two trips per month after construction. The only traffic is one or two trips per month per carrier. And so you're looking at a fully leased tower, which will have four carriers on it. You're looking at maybe five to 10 trips per month by a technician in a passenger vehicle. There's no noise other than an emergency generator, which we are proposing for the site. The generator generates noise according to the spec sheets that we submitted, five in the huge application we put in originally. 25 feet away equal to a vacuum cleaner, and as I said, you know, we are many times that away from the property. There's really no other noise that can be generated from this site. There's no smoke, there's no fumes. In terms of nuisance factors, it's very, very limited. The tower itself will not be lit. The only lighting will be small, you know, household bulbs, if you will, 60 or 75 watts or something like that, on the equipment cabinets or the shelters for when the technician goes there to check out the equipment. The access is off Center Road, Center Street, which is the existing driveway for the landowners. It sort of loops up around, and then we will be putting an access drive in from the end of the driveway, sort of loops around. They have an orchard area back there, loops around to the area where the compound is going to be located. It's going to be, that access drive will be 12 feet wide. It will be a gravel drive. The, well, we have adequate parking. We have a small parking area up there. I'm going to show you, if I may. Sheet Z5, which I think gives a good overview of the compound area itself and also a good profile of the tower. These rectangular shapes down here represent future carriers who will co-locate hopefully on this tower, thus lessening the need for other towers in town. We have reserved the top spot on the tower for the town's emergency responders, and then Verizon will be at about 150 feet on the tower. And so the dark rectangles up there represent Verizon's antennas. Within the compound, again, we show in dark what Verizon is proposing right here. They will have some equipment cabinets, and they also have the generator. We have lighter rectangles within the compound area showing that the compound has space to accommodate the future carriers when they come onboard. And again, we expect, we are hopeful, with good reason, that T-Mobile will site its antennas on this tower very shortly. Natural contours of the land are being followed wherever possible. As I said, much of the access is following the existing drive. A small amount of grading will be necessary around the compound, but because of the size of the parcel, which is like 73 acres, and because of the small size of the leased area, which is 10,000 square feet, we don't believe there will be any drainage or erosion issues. We have Audra Clum here, who is a wetland scientist, and she has prepared a letter. There was a question on the sidewalk from one of the ZBA members about whether the compound itself would impact any wetlands or wetland buffers. And so we submitted last night to the ZBA a stamped letter from Ms. Clum, who's here tonight, saying that no project disturbance, the compound itself is not going to impact any wetlands or wetland buffers. I'm going to hand that in. impact. If you can clear the visual hurdle, which we did in this case, I think, very, very well, as I said, these are low-impact projects. They don't generate pedestrian traffic, there's no true vehicular traffic generated, as I said, there's no nuisance factors. We talked with the ZBA last night about the color of the tower, and I think it's fair to say the ZBA pretty much unanimously felt that a galvanized steel finish would be the best. That's what we recommend. It weathers a little over time, but it really helps cut down the glare. We can paint it if you want, but we generally end up not doing that because most boards feel that the galvanized steel finish is the best. And so we think that this is actually going to be a low-impact project for many of the, many of the issues that are in front of the Planning Board. And I would, as I said before, the need for the tower up in that area, I think, has been pretty well demonstrated, not only by our radio frequency report that we submitted and went through last night, but also, as I said, by the emergency responders in the community and community members themselves. Having said that, Madam Chair, I'm happy to answer any questions, or I can go through briefly the site plan review criteria, which I will go and do.
Questions? Go ahead, Pete, Peter.
I think of the last time we met, there was the need to have the generators cycle periodically.
Yep.
And it was suggested that those be done during the day rather than night, even though it's very low.
We can do that.
And that's not a problem.
That's not a problem. It's not a problem. The ordinance, or the site plan review regs in Section 173-15, it basically says that we have to meet all other town ordinance requirements, et cetera, which we feel we have. Excuse me, that's 173-19. 173-19B deals with architectural design standards, and we feel that that's really not applicable to our project. A fair reading of that section basically deals with windows and entrances and roofs like that. We don't really feel that's applicable to us, but certainly to the extent they have any standards we have to meet in that section, we feel we meet them. Section 173-20 deals with streets and access. As I said, we are using an existing driveway off Route 28. There's a 12-foot-wide gravel drive leading to the compound. We shone that on the site plans. It's not going to be used by the general public, and as I said, after construction, it's a very limited number of trips that will be, or people will be taking trips up to the site. Section 173-21 deals with stormwater drainage. As I said, the vast majority of the existing grade and drainage ways on the property are not going to be changed. The compound, the closest the compound comes to a property line is 185 feet, and within that, very little grading will be done. And for that reason, we are not changing existing water courses. We're not impacting the existing flow of water. For that reason, we don't believe there will be stormwater drainage issues here. Section 173-22 deals with the water supply. It's unmanned. We don't use water, so that's not applicable. 173-23 deals with sewage, and again, that's not applicable. 173-24 deals with utilities. We will tap into the existing utilities or extend the existing utilities, and they can be used for the facility. Section 173-25 deals with signs. The only signs up there will be small identifying signs on the cabinets or the fence. And I should probably note that there will be a fence, as shown on the plans, six feet high with three strands of barbed wire to secure this location, but there will be no true signage up there, certainly nothing on the pole. 173-26 deals with the preservation of natural features, and again, we are minimizing the grading and clearing necessary for the access drive and the compound. We're not interfering with any natural drainage ways, and all construction debris will be removed in a timely manner, so we feel we meet those requirements. 173-27 deals with special flood hazards. The facility's not located in such an area. I just submitted Ms. Clum's letter. I would also note, one of the things we have to do for this site, for, and every tower company or carrier has to do for every site, is prepare what's called a NEPA report, N-E-P-A, which is a National Environmental Programmatic Act.
Oh, I see.
Policy Act. I always get it wrong. I had to ask her last night, and I still didn't remember. I think Mr. Austin got it right. I did not. But that is a comprehensive report. If you've ever seen one, it's literally about like that thick. It deals with all sorts of issues in terms of historic sites, cultural sites, Indian sites, endangered species, endangered plants, wetlands. I know I've missed a lot. Flood plains. So we have to get a clean NEPA. If there's any impacts on those, then we have to go back to the drawing board. And I would note, one of the things we handed in to the ZBA last night was the report from the State Historic Preservation Office that said there was no impacts on historic sites as a result of this site. So we feel we meet this, the requirements of Section 173-27. 173-27.1 deals with pedestrians and bicycle issues, which we don't believe is applicable to our project. 173-27.2 deals with outdoor lighting, and again, the tower is not going to be lit, and the only lighting will be the standard lighting, as I said, directly over an equipment shelter or equipment cabinet, so the technician can see what they're doing. Sections 173, 27.3 through .7 deal with streetscaping, buffering, landscaping standards, and we don't believe a lot of those sections or a lot of those requirements apply to us, given where we are on the property. The Planning Board absolutely has the right to talk about buffering and landscaping, et cetera. However, as I said, on the sidewalk, it's very clear no one's going to be able to see that where the compound is located. There's a lot of existing vegetation on that property already, and no one from the street, no one from any surrounding residents is going to be able to see it. If you stood up there, and I'm sure Mr. Breskin, I guess he was the one who was up there, can testify to that fact. It's really, as I said upfront, I use the word remote, that's probably not a great word, but the way the compound is located, we don't believe there's any additional landscaping that needs to be done. And I've tried to keep it brief, Madam Chair, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you very much for doing that. Does anyone have any concern about the landscape or the buffering?
Not given the remoteness of the site, Madam Chairwoman, no, not at all.
Okay.
I have one question for the applicant. Do you have a clean NEPA?
We're working on it now. What? Okay. All right. I, yeah. I don't know if you heard her response.
I did. Perhaps you maybe want to say it for the audience.
Right. It's, the NEPA is being undertaken right now, and we can't build until we have a clean NEPA. And what she said was, she's waiting for the tribal response, and I have to laugh because one of, I'm not laughing at the requirement itself, but one of the things you have to show on your NEPA is that you are not impacting Native American burial grounds or historical or cultural sites of significance for Native Americans. The way you do that is you send the site plans and the narrative or whatever to, they have a list of the federal tribes, and some get back very promptly, some do not. And there are times when you're waiting months to get one or two tribes, and I shouldn't say this, but you have to pay a fee for their review, and the tribes you have to notify, some of them are not in this state, not in any contiguous state. I think one's out in Michigan. I could be wrong. It's just, I had to do a deep dive into one time, and it really made me see red, quite frankly. But we're working on it. I can't give you a timeframe because of that, but we can't build until we get it.
One question, Madam Chairwoman, if I may ask the planner. Is it safe for us, then, to proceed in the absence of a completed NEPA, although we have the applicant's assurance that building can't progress until one is in hand because our 175, 168 requires us to have a clean NEPA on hand to proceed?
I think you're completely safe, because it's not only the applicant's word, it's federal law, that they have to have a clean NEPA to build.
I understand that, so.
If I may, you can make it a condition of approval. I mean, we, you know.
I don't think we need to go there.
Okay.
If, if you can't build absent a NEPA, we don't really need to worry about that being a condition. As Tavis said, it's a federal requirement, but I just want to be sure that we all understand that we're proceeding without actually having it in hand.
And I believe the municipality has to receive a copy of, not, not the whole NEPA, but the covers, the executive summary.
As long as, and the testing that we have, that they have one, yeah.
I would also note, I think one of our waiver requests, I think the ordinance says we have to give you a NEPA upfront.
Yes.
And we asked for a waiver from that, because you never have your NEPA done by the time you submit for local planning.
I don't think we can give you a variant, beg pardon, a waiver from that. That's an ordinance we simply.
No, no, no. Just as a matter of completeness, your ordinance says you have to submit a complete NEPA at the time you apply to the board.
Right.
And we just said, we want a waiver so we don't have to give it to you at the time of our application. We're not waiving the requirement altogether. We still have to do it.
Okay. All right.
Correct.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Other questions?
Go ahead with Peter first.
Go ahead, Peter.
The pictures that you ended up taking of the balloon float, some of them ended up indicating it was not visible from some particular place because of foliage.
Yep.
And, you know, I realize that, you know, when the leaves fall, things are different. At the same time, one might assume that there are enough twigs and branches and things like that, so you're not going to see them anyway. Is that realistic, or is that something which is not?
I read this. Yeah, I saw, I saw all that.
Yes, I sent it to the board.
I'll take it.
They were in the packets.
No one needs one?
I did the balloon tests and the visibility study for the project, A and D Clum Environmental. Typically, when you can just barely see the balloon, there was, I think it was photo three from North Wolfboro Road, you could see the balloon through the trees. In that case, it'll be slightly more visible because there'll be no leaves on the tree. But when you're down on 28, you had a lot of trees all along the view, like blocking your view completely. So even when all those leaves are gone, you still won't see the tower at that point. So anyplace where you kind of could see the balloon, that will make the tower more visible once the leaves are down in the, in this situation. But where the balloon really wasn't visible at all, like all along 28 and on Pork Hill Road and the vicinity's where I discussed, no views, it's just not going to be visible. And it, being a gray tower with the gray trees and, you won't see it. If it was sticking up just a little bit, then you would see it more clearly, but in this case, we don't, we don't have that.
Well, I was just down in Lake Wentworth today, and there's a cell tower up behind Sugar Hill. It is very visible, and none of the pictures that I saw were anywhere near that kind of visibility.
Was I involved with that project?
So what I've seen is very good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, John.
So first, on the landscaping, have you, have you got any neighbors' support, or have you intervened with any other neighbors on the 185 feet away on the backside?
I'm not sure I understand your question. No one, could you?
Have you reached out to them, or have they?
Well, they've been publicly noticed.
And you haven't gotten anything back from them, contrary?
And they have, to my knowledge, they haven't come to any of our meetings.
Okay. So as far as the camouflaging, what I'm looking at is 160, 175, 165, 3B, which...
I'm sorry, what were the numbers again?
175, 65, 3B. That talks about, "Equipment shelters shall be designed consistent with the traditional New England architecture styles," and, and number C, where it says, "Equipment shelters shall be camouflaged behind an effective year-round landscape buffer equal to the height of the proposed building or a wooden fence." I mean, if somebody goes to build up on that backside, what are they going to be looking at? They're going to be looking at your chain-linked fence down there, shouldn't we? I mean, I'm trying to, again, we're not talking about what we see right now, it's, because there's no development up there, but, you know, there could be some development in the future.
The, if you look at the, I guess, D2 shows the topo behind the site, and that's a very steep slope back there that somebody would have to be building. And that's a very steep slope back there that somebody would have to be building on. That would be number one. I mean, that gets really steep behind us. And if you look at... So I, I'm not sure that it's, it's likely somebody's going to be building there. I'm sure you have a steep slope ordinance, which quite frankly, I've never laid eyes on, but I'm sure you do. And if you look at the aerial photograph, which is Z1A, I mean, the neighbors control all the vegetation, so they would have to clearcut right up to the property line, even if they could build back there. And so, I, I have to be honest with you, I'm reluctant to say, I mean, reasonable minds can differ, but we'd be camouflaging this compound for somebody who might not ever show up and might not ever have a view of it.
Well, I'm not, I'm not doubting that, but I'm just going by what the ordinance says. It says, "Equipment shelters shall be designed consistent with traditional New England architectural styles." It says "shall," so...
Well, no. I think it says, "Shall be designed." If you're looking at...
Looking at 175, 65, 3B.
Three, well, you have to go back to three first. It says, "Equipment shelters shall be designed consistent with one of the following design standards." The traditional New England style is only one. If you go down to the next one, it says, "Equipment shelters shall be camouflaged behind," or, "Equipment shelters shall be camouflaged behind an effective year-round landscape buffer," which is what we think we have. And that's why we say we shouldn't have to do anything else. I mean, it's not possible to do this, I mean, with all due respect, it's not possible to do this within a New England architectural style with a roof pitch of at least 10 feet, if I'm reading that correct. I mean, the New, traditional New England style is one way to camouflage these things. We're not proposing that. We're proposing the year-round buffer, which is what is there now.
Yeah, but it's somebody else's buffer, I thought you said.
I'm sorry?
You said it was somebody else's buffer.
Well, but, I mean, it depends where you're standing. I mean, it's, if you're behind, yeah, it's somebody else's buffer, but if they clearcut to their property line, they're going to see a chain-link fence 200 feet off.
So effectively, the buffer is to prevent the abutter from being able to see the equipment? So if the buffer, if the abutter chose to remove the buffer, that would be on them, I think is the point?
I don't agree with it, but that's what you're saying. Go ahead. I mean, I'm just bringing it up.
Yep.
So, the road that goes up to it, where is it? I mean, when I was, when I walked up there, I walked up between the apple orchards.
It swings around the orchard? And I, this is a pet peeve of mine, and you're exactly correct to call it as a road, because that's what it says on the plans. I've had this discussion with an engineer once, I've had it 100 times on these types of projects. It's not a road. It's a driveway. It's on a private property, there's no public access, no public traffic, and it doesn't have to be built to road standards. I know it says roads on the plans, so you're correct to call it that.
I'm not going there, I'm just...
But it's a dri, I know, I'm just saying. But it swings around, if you look at sheet Z2, I mean, several sheets show it, but Z2 shows, it starts from the, it starts at the end of the existing driveway and then swings up around.
Yep.
That's where it goes.
So that, so that's going to be all built, you're going to have concrete trucks and stuff that goes up that?
No, it's a gravel drive.
No, I mean, to build your, your base, concrete trucks can go up there?
Yep.
So what happens if there's a fire? Will a fire truck be able to make its way up there?
Yep. And there's a, there's a monitor, there will be a monitor up there. I mean, not a, let me rephrase that. It's alarmed. There's an alarm system.
Okay.
But I'm very confident they're going to be able to get the construction vehicles up there.
So the, so the height of the, of the buffer for later on there, you're, says that you're, you're, you're counting on the buffer of the neighbors to maintain the buffer?
Well, go on.
So there's no buffer at all, though?
No. There is an effective year-round buffer. What we were talking about was, you said if somebody builds a house back there, and I said, from that area, the only way they'd be able to see it, assuming they can build on that steep slope, which I think is highly doubtful, they'd have to clearcut down to their property line. So if they do that, given, and by the way, given the topo and given how the house is oriented, I'm not even sure even if they did clearcut it, they would be able to see the compound. But if they did, from that viewpoint, perhaps they would see the equipment compound.
So is there a sequoia tree or something of that nature that you could make the, make the pole out of that to make it more naturalized?
We believe that a fake tree is far more visually intrusive than a monopole, especially one with such limited visibility as shown by that test.
Okay. So I did take a ride up to North Wolfboro, and down the right-hand side, you could see another tower down in the lowland, and it popped right up, you could see it right away. And that's the only reason why I'm going into this process of this discussion, because obviously, if there was a pole that you saw down on the low and you just saw that thing pop right up, yeah, and, but if it was, if it was kind of discreetly camouflaged, and that's this point up there, maybe you could make that, that style of a, of a buffer happen.
As, using a fake tree?
Yeah.
Well, we're talking about two different things, because this discussion started about, I thought, how to camouflage the compound.
It was, but you said you didn't, you didn't, you didn't feel the need to camouflage the compound.
That's not what I said. The compound is effectively camouflaged. That's what I said. I think it will continue to be. If somebody is able to build a house on that extremely steep slope and clearcuts, then they may have a view of the compound. That doesn't mean the compound is not camouflaged. If you walked up there, could you see anything other than trees? No. You can't see the road, you can't see any other houses. We think that's a very effective camouflage spot, since we're talking about, in the, in the ordinance section you looked at, or quoted, was talking about the compound, not the tower. No, I got nothing else.
Okay, and one...
Yeah, Kathy.
Okay, and then I have to go to the public.
Okay. Tavis, can you give us an idea of the lot sizes budding this property in the backside?
They are similarly large lots.
Hundred-plus acres?
I don't want to say that large, no. There's probably a couple of 50s and some 40s. Many of the lots immediately to the rear of this, using Center Street as the front, actually don't even have road frontage or appear to be buildable.
Okay, so there's, there's one potential amelioration there, John, that the lots in the backside are big, and some of them are backlots anyway with no road frontage.
I think they come, I, I see they come in from Johnson Road, that's, that's why I was...
Well, Johnson Road doesn't, yeah, Johnson Road does, but it doesn't drive through and touch all of the backlots in that area. I'm not arguing for anything in particular, I'm just trying to suggest that if, if somebody does decide to build on one of those larger lots, we can't, there's, there's no way of knowing where they're going to put their house. And I don't think it would be necessarily fair to the applicant to insist that he put a buffer around his equipment shed to take into account every possible permutation of where a house site may wind up on one of the backlots.
I'm not even sure a condition would hold up, because the applicant's required to meet the conditions of the site as it is, which is arguably up to the board, but arguably effectively buffered.
Agreed.
So if you were moving into the middle of a residential neighborhood, I would think we'd be having a much different discussion, because it would be the new kid on the block, as opposed to everyone else moving in around it.
I would also note, and I should know his name, because I met him at the sidewalk, and he was on the ZBA, but one of the ZBA members owns one of the abutting lots behind. Do you, Peter? I'm sorry? Yes. Tim?
Cronin.
Cronin, thank you. He sat in that chair over there last night. He was at the sidewalk. He owns an abutting lot. His lot is 78 acres, which is just a bit bigger than ours. And he is in favor of this project. He voted in favor of it, and he wants the coverage.
No, I'm in favor of it too. I thought it was a, I thought it was a great thing for the area. I'm just trying to look at some of these other neighbors that are on the backside over there. I mean, don't get me wrong, I'm just trying to protect their interests, because I'm an elected official, and they probably made some votes for people to represent them and ask the tough questions. And maybe I'm not asking the, the right question that you would want me to ask, but I'm going to ask it.
You, you're free to ask any question you like, Mr. Thurston. I mean, no, and I hope you understand, I mean no offense by my responses.
Okay, go, go ahead, Peter.
When I look at the aerial, I end up seeing that there is a, basically a row of trees around the edge of that field, because that's how it was done. Would it be possible, in response to John's comments, that those trees be left and not cut down? It just seems like, to me, those end up protecting the area, and even if you clearcut down to it, those trees would end up then protecting it.
Well...
I'm, I'm looking at the aerial picture.
As I, as I am too. I hesitate, because I have not spoken to a landowner about that. I, I think...
I, I don't really think it's really an issue, but, you know, it's one of those things that I just, I throw that out, and, you know, it might be something that would be considered, but I, I don't.
Just the applicant should be aware of the board's concerns for the potential interruption of view in the backlot with your structure without some kind of tree buffer.
So noted, I mean, so noted.
Okay, thank you. One question regarding camouflage. We have the discretion to request that the tower be painted a light gray or a light blue hue.
Yep.
The ZBA recommends galvanized. I'm perfectly happy with galvanized. I think that would blend in against the typical sky we have up here, a lot better than a light blue or a light gray. But the board should be aware that we have the discretion to call for something other than a galvanized tower.
Okay.
And galvanized still looks like light gray.
Yeah, it is, it is kind of a gray, light gray anyway, once it weathers a little bit.
Okay, I think we're done with our questions. I'm going to go to the public now, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and this is a, a public hearing on, on the tower, if anybody wants to address us. Now would be the time to do that.
Gordon Lang, I'm on Trask Mountain Road and also president of the North Wolfboro Area Association. I'll repeat pretty much what I told the ZBA last night. We did, several members of the community and the board there drove around and looked at the balloon tests and found that visually, there was no problem here. We couldn't see the tower from the road at any point. The only person that was in any way impacted by that would be the Hewitts at the top of Upper Trask Mountain, and they shared a picture of what they could see, but they had no complaint about the visual impact there and felt that the need of people in the, in the area who were not getting service over road, anything else that they might say. I don't have strong feelings about it either way. Most of the folks that I've talked with have not expressed strong feelings. There have been one or two people who are opposed to cell towers in general, and I'll, if they're here, they can speak. But in general, we've found that the, it seems to serve our needs in the area. There is a, an express dead zone there that we've talked about and documented before. And I think this is probably the best placement that we have been able to imagine, and so we're kind of backing out and letting it go forward from our point of view.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
It was mentioned by Attorney Springer, if I have my name correctly, that the ZBA discussed the camouflage issue and the material that the monopole is made out of, and that's all we did. We passed on a decision that's the purview under the performance standards for the planning board. Alls we asked was a description of what the material would be like in the sunlight or the daylight, but we, we're no further than that. So, I'm going to relate a little story. If Victor was here, he would remember, and Kathy, you may. When the water tank, water tower was equipped with wireless facility, antennas and so forth, I appealed that decision because I can see it from my property. And the interesting thing is, it's been repainted, kind of that blue cloud color, and it is less visible, but it's almost completely disappeared because the trees have grown. And yet, they still get their signals out, because the trees haven't grown higher than the tank. So my question, I know you've been talking about camouflage and trees and stuff, some of it I could hear, some of it I couldn't, but the question that I would have, if I may show you this picture. I took that picture the day of the site visit, and the area that I'm concerned about is that cluster of trees behind where the young woman is standing. And when, I don't, I don't know if you got pictures of all the sites they visited, and they snap pictures, did, yeah? Okay, the last one on that list of pictures, I think, shows the one from the jail or the county, county courthouse. That tower is extremely tall, and I would hope that the board would consider that, that the trees in the backside of the facility area not be cut down. No clearcut there, that they be allowed to grow. And they will take the curse off the vision of the monopole, because they won't grow 100 feet. I don't, Pete, you're more informed on that sort of thing, but I don't think we have a whole lot of 100-foot trees. A canopy might be 80, 90 feet, wouldn't interfere with the arrays that are on the monopole. So the long and short of it is, you do have the wherewithal under your design standards, 175, 165, be... 175, 165, B1, small b, and it's talking about ground mount personal wireless facilities, and talks about the height and the depth of the screening and the trees and the vegetation, buffer area, and that an easement or lease shall be specified that the trees within the buffer shall not be removed or topped unless the trees are dead or dying and present a hazard to the person's property. It also goes on to say in that same section, number 6A, as required in the camouflage section above, all ground mount personal wireless service facilities which are not camouflage, so if you choose not to camouflage it, you have another provision that says, "by existing buildings or structures shall be surrounded by a buffer of dense tree growth." So, that's the point of my discussion with you, is make some sort of provision where those trees that are currently there be allowed to grow and not be topped off. I hope I've done the best I can to make it understandable. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from public? Would you like to respond to anything that has been said?
Understanding which photograph Ms. Ryan is referring to, that was taken from the Oscepee County. Was that the courthouse? I think, the tree she's, I'm not sure which tree she's talking about to be protected. I mean, the trees in the foreground in that photograph, I think, are in Oscepee. I could be wrong.
It's a different picture.
Well, I guess, is this the picture, Ms. Ryan, you're talking about? If those trees, I don't know what kind of trees those are, I guess Audra could speak better as to what the expected growth is to be, but you cannot make, and we are not allowed or required to make, a tower invisible. There's no question about it. Trees she's pointing out don't camouflage the tower, and this is why I said when I was speaking with Mr. Thurston, we're talking, we might have been talking two different things in terms of, I thought we were talking about the compound, and then we ended up talking about the pole. I don't think, I could be wrong, I don't think those trees are ever going to cover the pole. Pole's 160 feet high. To put a no cut or no top easement on that, I just think is unfair to the landowner.
I think, if I may, the ordinance Ms. Ryan is referring to, 175, 165B, lowercase b, camouflage by vegetation reads, "if personal wireless service facilities are not camouflage from public viewing areas," and then it requires the vegetation be maintained for a minimum distance of 150 feet from the mount. This paragraph was written in anticipation of a mount in a public area, visible to the passing public, the driving public. I don't think it was anticipated to apply to a mount in 100-plus acre site with 1,000-plus distance from the nearest highway.
I agree.
And I think in that case, 165, 175, 165B, B is not applicable to this application because it doesn't speak to the purpose of paragraph lowercase b.
I mean, I'm not sure, given the topography, I could be wrong, but I'm not sure, given the topography, if the landowner clear-cut his entire property, I'm not sure, standing where the compound is, you would see the road. Because it drops off, really, I mean, I'm not sure you can see up there from the road, even if there was no trees there. If that, I mean, if we're talking about the compound, which I think we are. So, I would agree with Mr. Hodder's point.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you. Any other member of the public? Okay, I think we're ready to consider how we want to go on this. Suggested motion?
I think we ought to add an additional condition of approval specifying a galvanized steel pole or whatever, monopole, since we are expected to make a choice, and we haven't done so so far. So, I'd make that a condition of approval.
Okay, well, and, Tavis, you had also suggested some other conditions of approval. Oh, yes, thank you.
The only ones recommended at this point are the fairly standard ones, refers to the plans submitted August 9th. Obviously, that would also include anything submitted at E96 hearing, as well as this evening, which is part of standard condition number three, all documentation submitted should be part of the package. Applicant should be responsible for payment of all recording fees for notice of decision. And the new number four, which would be applicant should be required to install galvanized steel pole at installation.
Okay, so, it seems that the applicant, they were required to meet with the ordinance 175 to dash 159, as well as the site plan regulations. It seems that they have done this. In addition, they are talking about co-location plus room for the emergency services. This seems to be a benefit to the community, and just judging from the fact that people have not come out to object to that, I think speaks to that issue. They have met the setbacks and the coverage, the height already has a bare hint. There's no impact on the wetlands. They have already met the camouflage that Mr. Hodder just spoke of. There's no noise associated with this. Stormwater regulations have been satisfied. It seems, from the testimony and the questions, that it seems that people are comfortable with the landscape.
I'd still like to see a wooden fence instead of a chain link fence itself, but it's not located underground. It's above the ground, so we have the ore. If it's not an underground vault, ore goes to proposed building, wooden fence.
Okay, well, and then, it seems that we also need to add a condition that if this tower is not in use any longer, that would, then it would need to be removed.
So, I meant to catch you before you started going into the findings. That was exactly...
No, I was just mentioning what the, what has happened for this application.
So, one of the other sections is 175, 172, paragraph C. The way it's written, it says, "The planning board should require the applicant to post a bond at the time of construction to cover the cost of the removal of personal wireless facilities that is deemed abandoned under this section." That really isn't a practical way of doing that because posting a bond at 22 expense isn't likely to cover it. I did discuss with the applicant, having an agreement signed, their lease, the GMR lease with the property owner already says, if it's abandoned, they have to remove the tower from the property. But they're willing to put together an instrument that the board could have reviewed by town council that makes them financially, fiscally responsible for the removal. So, you'd be satisfying that section, but not having them post an actual bond.
That becomes a condition.
Okay, now, we could add that as a condition.
I can draft, I have drafted a condition saying applicant shall submit, yes, similar for review by town council.
Okay, all right, so there'd be five conditions. Okay, so I would entertain them...
I managed the condition of the color of the tower to add that the equipment attached to it would be of similar color. Because if you put them up there and they're pink, that will be different from having a gray box up there, which is the equipment.
Okay, so, is that all right with everybody?
The repeaters and things of that sort?
Right. In other words, the things which are up there attached to the tower, they...
The antennas.
...are of similar color to the tower, the gray tower.
Okay, the tower and the attachments.
Modifying the condition to say pole should be of galvanized steel, all pertinent structures to be of similar color.
Thank you.
Okay, well, we do need someone to make a motion.
So moved.
Should close the hearing.
Yes, I, yes, I will close the hearing now, and now, Mike, you've just made a motion.
What am I moving?
To approve this application.
All right, I'd be happy to make a motion to approve case number 2022-08, tax map 009-001, application by GMR Holdings of New Hampshire LLC for a cellphone tower at the appropriate, at the specified location, with the five conditions as presented tonight by the planner.
Okay. I'll second that. And any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, very good. Thank you very much, folks. Okay, on to the next item on the agenda.
It could have been bright green.
Scenic roads.
Good.
Barry Muccio was here from the Municipal Electric Department, since the, where he's going to, the issue that he's going to be talking about is a scenic road, so it is up to the planning board to hold a public hearing and prior to granting an approval of this cutting on the scenic roads.
Good evening.
Hi, Barry.
I think I know everybody here, Barry Muccio, Wolfboro Municipal Electric Department, Director of Operations. I do have a PowerPoint presentation, I hope.
He saw it, it just disappeared. I can't make this room up.
Can you wing it in the meantime? You've got your show and tell.
Won't take long.
You've got your show and tell right there.
It was sitting on his laptop the whole time.
As soon as I hit... I know, I told, the last three presentations I've given in various boards, I have not had the best of luck with this. Well, I can start anyways, I think...
There you go, you can discuss the memo you sent.
I can discuss, I can discuss some of the items here as we, and then we can go through and review. For those of you who have been here a while, I think you've probably are familiar with this process. Cowper Road is designated as a scenic road. As part of that designation, any tree trimming we do inside the right-of-way, which up there, it's going to be in between the presumed stone walls that you see. I actually have hard copies, Tavis, if it's...
Hold that thought. Don't sneeze.
I made them for a reason.
What reason could that be?
Murphy.
I had, I don't know, I hope I had them for everybody.
We can share one.
Friendly. Always prepared.
I can share. Why don't we share?
Okay.
Thank you.
Look at these pretty photos. We'll share by the time.
So, if you go to page two, I kind of have an overview map. Cowper Road is approximately mile and a half long. You'll see that section in red, I know it on the left. That was a line that we came in front of the board in 2013, 2014, and that was an overhead line that we constructed to a residence, the Eastman Residence, which is just off Cowper Road. The line in the blue, what you see there, is the existing pole line. It goes through the woods from Started Road, approximately a half mile, and then links back up to Cowper Road and goes to the right and feeds the last customer there. So, what we're proposing to do is to link those two lines, those two lines that feed Cowper Road. And by doing that link, we will be able to eliminate that section of blue line that goes cross-country through the woods for approximately a half mile. That line's in rough shape. There's approximately 15 of the poles out there that need to be replaced. And when we went through the CARES Act, where we got some internet providers to send internet up there, by eliminating that and doing an underground to link the two sections there, we were able to get the residence of Cowper Road internet service and cable. The two areas that I'm here tonight for, to discuss, the two relatively short areas there shown in like that chartreuse green, if you can see that, one on either side of Mr. Dougherty's field, those are the two areas that we need to trim in order to link that section. The section you see in white will be underground cable installed that, and that's through basically the fields of Mr. Dougherty for visual reasons. That was one of the conditions of him allowing us to link that. It would be a nice visual on the screen, but I think you get the gist of it.
It's just smaller here.
Yeah, it's just much smaller, and the people at home can enjoy it, but...
The audience can.
Yeah, the audience. So, the areas in chartreuse green there represent approximately 560 feet of aerial tree line where we need to extend the poles and wires. I think there's three poles and wires that need to be extended in that section to allow us to link the underground. The next slide basically goes through the provisions of RSA 231, 157, and 158 that defines the tree trimming requirements of a scenic road. Trees along a scenic road shall not be cut, damaged, removed without prior written consent of the planning board or other designated municipal body. You are the designated municipal body. What that, what that covers is everything within the right-of-way. Once you step out of the right-of-way and get into private property, that is not governed by a public hearing whatsoever. Private property homeowners, landowners have the right to cut whatever they want. This also pertains to trees within that right-of-way with a minimum circumference of 15 inches measured at four feet in height. So, this, my little prop, this basically is the minimum that we can cut without a public hearing. This size, this can be cut without going through this process, but it's everything over this size which falls under your jurisdiction. Many of the trees we need to cut are going to be under this size. But I have identified 17 trees which will be larger than this. Some may or may not be in the right-of-way. If they're close, I included them as part of this presentation. So, if you go to the next slide, which has the photo, this photo, you're standing at the Eastman's intersection driveway, which we have a power line currently. You don't see the pole, but it's, it will be on the right-hand side of this photo. If you look up, you can see where our truck is parked. If you look up, you can see where our truck is parked up there. That's basically from this driveway intersection to where that truck is parked is the area that we're going to require trimming on the southern end. Again, I mentioned it's 580 feet of aerial line, 17 trees. I have spoken with all the abutting landowners. In this case, there's only two of them, there's two large landowners up there. They're both 100% behind these efforts, have no problems with that. And if I could just reiterate the fact that trimming really is the single most controllable method that we can to prevent power outages and what we consider nuisance outages from vegetation touching the line as well as wildlife squirrels accessing those lines. We obviously will adhere to all the scenic road rules, regulations, like we did at the lower section when we came in front of this board in 2013. And any of you that have been up there, I think you'll see that that line was put in in a manner like we will this one that really minimized the amount of cutting that we had to do, and the line really, it looks fairly natural up there now without being, you know, an obtrusive right-of-way cut whatsoever. Now, the other photos I have are strictly identifying the specific takedowns that we needed to do. If you go to the next page, we have them ribbed. And I'm not quite sure how I can, you know, you can look at them and, same thing with the next page, tree takedowns. The photo on the left, there are, you can't see everything that we've marked. I think there's three on the left, there's two on the, on the right photo. And if I can make note while we're at this one slide here, that we did have our tree warden, Kirk Titus, review these tree takedowns in the field. And of all the 17 trees, this maple right here is one, he would, he would like us to do whatever we can to save that. And I think, I think we can attempt to do that by cutting off a large leader that's hanging out over the road. We certainly will attempt to do that once the line's in the air. I'll have a better understanding of how close it's going to be to that tree. But we'll do everything we can to, to try to save that one maple.
How big's the leader?
It's going to be bigger than this, John. I mean, so it, you know, the leader's probably this size, and it's heading out over the road.
So there's a chance the tree will die anyway because you've cut more than a third off the tree?
Oh, this, it's not, it's no ways near a third of the, of the size of that tree, no. I mean, a lot of times, these, these efforts to trim will find, we get the, when you trim stuff like that, it actually blooms more, so it's a never-ending battle with power lines and trees. It's, it really is. Again, the next slide, you'll see a batch of three or four, I think actually two of those are going to be on private landowners' land. The only, the only thing I've been asked by, by one of the landowners is if there is any oak there that needs to come down, that that would be left for him or placed over the stone wall for him. I guess he burns wood. There's some value there in that. The last thing I have is you'll see the email from our tree warden, and he reiterates the fact that he'd like to save that maple if we can. And again, I will, I will make every effort to, to see if we can avoid the removal of that tree.
So the landowners, have they offered to you to cut more trees in, on their side so that you can open it up more?
They, they, both of them have no qualms with any additional cutting, but I really don't believe we're going to do any more additional cutting than the 17 trees. I think we can pull it off, we've looked at it numerous times. I don't see a lot of private property trees that are going to have to be taked out. This is not going to be a major difference in what you see there right now. So, Peter? Yeah?
There's obviously a section there which is underground, and the underground is put through a field which therefore has no impact on any of the trees around. And I'm sure that you've looked at the issue of putting it all underground. However, I know that when you dig a trench and you cut roots of trees, then they tend to die, and so therefore, it is probable that if you put it all underground, you'd kill more trees than what you're doing now?
If, if we did the whole thing underground, of course, costs go up tremendously, especially in today's.
My experience is when you have disturbing roots of trees, then they die.
So because this, these areas happen to be already wooded, you are correct in that assumption. We can't have the poles really close to the road. We've got to be eight feet off the road, the poles, for we're not interfering with traffic and accidents of that sort. So you get the poles eight feet off the road, and then you go underground to those, the trench line is going to be in the root system, so.
Correct.
That's sort of why we limited the underground to the open field space, and then knowing that we had to put, well, two poles on one side to get to it, and on the other end, we had to add another pole to get to where the underground was going to terminate, so.
The death of trees from tree root issues is very real.
It certainly is, yeah. Seen a lot with pines.
I was just going to note, because we're having this fun with the viewers at home, I can get the PowerPoint to WKTV and they can include that. I don't know if you plan on firing up the saw tomorrow or next week, but if anyone sees the photos and wants to reach out, that way they'd have the chance to see the PowerPoint and address you with any concerns.
I have it on my laptop. Is it a laptop issue, or is it a?
You're going to think I'm kidding, but I opened it up when I knew you were coming up, Doug saw it, it flashed on the screen and then disappeared. So it's not a laptop thing.
It's a light bulb issue.
Well, we even tried reset, I reset literally everything.
I think I'm fixing this thing.
No, so you can see up there, there's image on the screen, just not the PowerPoint.
For the purposes of tonight's hearing, I think we've satisfied.
Yeah, right.
Okay. I'm kind of bummed though, I went through all that.
Okay, all right, Barry, is that it?
That's all I have. If you have any further questions, I'm happy to entertain you. Vaughn has a question over here. We're going to.
Just one. Okay, go ahead Vaughn.
Barry, you mentioned stone walls. Will there be any impact to any of the stone walls?
No, there will not be. I mean, the stone walls that are out there aren't exactly pristine, they're fairly well scattered, but no, we don't have to do any work with the stone walls, yeah. All the underground has been, work was done in the past, so.
Okay, Julie?
Barry, what's the width of the right-of-way around the poles?
Around the poles.
What's the right-of-way?
Well, we typically like to get 10 feet on either side of the pole. In this case, I don't know if we're going to fully get that before, we want to keep the poles obviously within the town right-of-way. It's just that some of the trimming may be outside of that, but we like 10 feet in the single-phase line like this, John?
So will there be any room for any improvements on the roadway for drainage and, and stormwater management in the future?
Have you, have you been up there recently, John? When we did the underground, when we put the underground conduance and all in, and it got re-crested, and that road holds up really well, yeah. I've never seen a washout out there since that time. That, I think is one of the better maintained roads as far as what's there for drainage now. I've never seen it wash.
Okay, I want to open the public hearing. Any members of the public want to speak to this issue?
What about the stumps?
I mean, as part of tree trimming, we typically don't grind stumps. We're going to cut them flush at grade, but the stumps will be left, yeah. They'll disappear in a short period of time, and we're not going to leave them. I'm from a long line of Italian stonemasons. I would like nothing better than to put them back on the wall.
Okay, thank, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Lang.
Gordon Lang again. I was in touch with Jonathan Dougherty earlier today, and he has one request, which I think he's already expressed to you before, and that is just minimal cutting, do the least possible. He's very excited that this is going to happen, that we're connecting the underground line to the new line, and that's all positive, and everybody that I know of on the road is, is very excited about that, but just the least, least footprint possible.
Thank you.
I've had an ongoing, Jonathan's been great up there working with us in this project, so, yeah, I met with him even as, I met with him last week again, happened to catch him there, and so, he is supportive, and, yeah, even for him to let us do this, we, we really had to go through and be creative in the layout of the line to ensure that it was as minimal on his property, certainly, so.
Okay, go ahead, Doug.
Will anything be done to the stumps to keep them from sprouting?
Will anything be done? No, no, they won't. I don't know how else to be more, generally, those larger trees don't sprout like some of the, the small shoots, you know? When you cut stuff like this, that's when you get all the suckers, but generally, the larger trees that are older, you're not going to get the suckers. Like, I mean, we have to do a maintenance trimming program every 10 years, so if anything gets up towards the line again, it will have to be addressed at that time.
Okay, Peter?
What is going to happen with the old line? Are you going to remove the?
So the old line that goes through the woods, it's like a half mile, that will be removed. And so there'll be, not that it's on a right-of-way in necessarily an area where you'd be able to see it, but that will be allowed to reforest.
Including the, the poles that are in there?
Yeah, yeah, we're not going to leave them. The, the issue I'm going to have up there, though, is this, this phone company is on those old poles, so, that's a whole other issue, but they have, in theory, agreed to this link as well to remove their line. So what we'll do, I mean, we literally, we could be done as soon as next week. We don't have a lot of work to do. We'll top the poles at the pole line, at the phone line, we'll remove all our equipment, and then we'll have to wait until the phone company does their thing to physically remove the poles, and we all know how fast they are, so.
You can tell them that they're going to have to fix it when.
Okay.
Unfortunately, because they have so few customers.
Anyone else have any, any questions? Okay.
No, it's just.
Okay.
Do you want a motion?
Barry, thank, thank you very much.
Thank you, I brought my pointer, and let me at least use it. That doesn't even work.
Okay, we've, we've heard from members of the public and planning board has considered this issue. Go ahead.
I was going to say, I'm not sure if it's a motion, but I.
I think we should, the board needs to recommend that the chairwoman write a letter of approval.
Yeah.
There we go.
So I'm going to make a motion that in accordance with the pertinent provisions of RSA 231-157-58, the planning board approves the municipal electric department's plan to trim trees along that portion of Cowper Road as presented to the board tonight, October 4, 2022, and instructs the chairwoman to so, communicate to the director of the department.
Okay, there's a, a motion, somebody want to second that?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, Barry, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Would I be limited to start until such letter was received, or?
I'm pretty speedy at signing letters.
I think the short, I think the short answer is no, because you heard that it's going to be happening, you know?
It's not like a building for me.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Peneo, Abenaki lighting.
Do you have a PowerPoint, Joe?
I do not.
Oh, good.
He knows better.
Good evening. I'm here to discuss with you an ongoing project that the Board of Selectmen have approved at the Abenaki ski area. As you're well aware, the voters this past year approved funds to rehabilitate and rebuild the Pop Whalen Ice Arena. That project's well underway. One of the items that we undertook with that project was to reconfigure the electrical infrastructure which fed the various buildings and whatnot up there. Interestingly, the way some of this stuff was fed, to get lighting to the ski area, it literally went through three buildings before it got to the building. So we streamlined that, we put in all-new transformer, all-new service disconnects, and it's a direct burial line to the base of the hill. That work is done, and it's, it's code compliant and in excellent shape. This summer, the Friends of Abenaki came forward with a project proposal to enhance the lighting at the Abenaki ski area. The project will include the installation of 12 new 45-foot utility poles, and it'll also include the installation of, I believe it's 28 new, for better terms, stadium-type light fixtures. The light fixture dimensions are on the page, one of these pages here for you. There's essentially almost two feet by two feet. And what the plan here is, is we're going to replace the existing lighting as it is, but we're also going to illuminate the trail known as Twister, which was cut out a couple of years ago. This will give us the ability to have two trails for skiing during winter operations. Our intention is that it will only be operational from dusk during ski season until the closing of the ski area that evening, which is traditionally no later than 10 o'clock in the evening. Now, there could be some events, New Year's Eve and whatnot, where that timeframe could be extended later on into the evening, based on events taking place there. However, that would go to the Board of Selectmen for approval. Once the event is over, the lights will be turned off. It's envisioned that the lights will be turned off in the summer, not utilized, again, unless there were a special event that were to come forward on the hill or at the base of the hill. These lights, because of their nature, they don't have full cutoff, therefore, they're not dark sky compliant. And that's kind of one of the reasons why I'm coming in front of you tonight, is to discuss this with you, to get some buy-in from you and understanding that, look, I as a town manager, fully understand that we need to follow the rules and regulations that are set forward, but this one's kind of a different beast, and even if the lighting were full cutoff and dark sky compliant, the vendor is telling us the reflection off of the snow is going to make it irrelevant anyways. So basically, we're here to communicate this to you guys this evening, and hopefully get some endorsement and/or any recommendations which you may have for this project, and anything you'd like to hear from me about it going forward.
Is Abenaki open all, every day during the week, or is it just certain days?
I believe that the goal going forward is to try and have the facility open greater hours during the day and during the night. So, we're hopeful. It really boils down to staffing at this point, but we're hopeful to be able to offer, you know, skiing in the evening, you know, after the children get out of school, have their dinner, play their basketball games or whatnot, if they want to make a couple runs. We want them to have that opportunity to do that and utilize the area. Again, for snowmaking, for grooming purposes, they'll be turned off.
Okay, so we're talking about from 4:30...
10 usually is going to be the latest.
Until 10 from December until the end of...
End of March.
End of March?
Mid-March.
Okay.
Mid-March, probably.
Okay, and are all of these poles going to be replaced?
There's a couple that will be remaining, that were replaced a couple years ago, but there's 12 new poles which are being installed. And I think there's nine that are being removed, something like that. So, I can't tell you the gross number of poles, but I can tell you the gross number of lights, I believe, is 28.
Okay, thank you. Questions, Doug?
Will the lights be on seven days a week during ski season?
Only when the area is in operation. So, you know, if we do get to that point where we have the staffing to be able to have the area in operation seven days a week, you know, from dusk till eight, nine, 10 o'clock at night, we'd love to be able to offer that to the community, but part of it really boils down to staffing issues.
And how does the proposed lighting compare to the existing lighting?
Excellent question. So, the existing lighting is about the same size, but the existing lighting is halogen. It's dated. It's time for it to be replaced. But as far as the size is concerned, it's about equivalent. These are much more efficient, obviously, LEDs, and they have had the provider map it out to see where there may be any shadow spots. When we have kids up there racing, obviously, we want to try not to have any shadows, if at all possible, so they can ski as safely as they possibly can.
Yeah, so that addresses the physical size of the lights, but in total lumens of the number, times the number of lights existing compared to the lumens times the number proposed.
Yeah.
Wondering how much overall brighter it might be?
I can't answer that question for you, Doug, with any confidence, because frankly, I don't think we've got the data on the previous lights that are up there.
It's adding a whole trail, so it's another stripe.
Okay, did you want to say something else, Juan?
No.
Okay, all right, go ahead, Mike.
Have you... To Doug's question, have you chosen the variety of light yet? Is it going to be the 50K or the 100K lumens?
So, I believe, and this is the provider's information, I believe that it all hinges on the electrical load that they're able to connect to. And they're able to connect to the 240 volt single-phase. As far as what those lumens are, I couldn't tell you without doing a deep dive into it. And quite frankly, I didn't realize how tiny this other sheet was until I looked at it this evening, so.
So, we don't really know how bright this illumination is going to be?
In comparative, no.
Because we don't know how big these, how many lumens these lights are going to be pumping out.
No. I would say that's a fair assessment.
On each pole, how many of these light devices are going to be hung?
So, on the poles nearest the toe, there should be one on the lights, or on the poles, rather. And then, when you get over to the center, there will be two, for all intents and purposes, one facing Twister, one facing the center of the trail. Now, it's my understanding there are a couple poles that aren't facing Twister, may have two lights on them. But again, the total number, I believe, is 28 on all of the poles, total.
This is going to be a real thing, isn't it? No, sorry, thank you.
Julie.
As someone who doesn't ski anymore, I expect it to be the best it can be. But what I'm thinking about is, okay, offseason, are these lights going to be arranged in such a fashion with light switches that we can do something with just the base lodge, like, say, in the spring or in the fall, light up just the base for an evening event?
You bring up an excellent question. And there are going to be two poles at the base, which are going to be fed separately from a different breaker than the ones on the hill, for exactly that purpose, so that we can illuminate the base if we've got, you know, the winter carnival festival happening, or spring carnival, rather, you know...
And not slopes?
Yeah, not the slopes. So, absolutely, yes, there'll be the ability to illuminate that base area exclusively.
And I just expect the rest of it to be the best, the best it can be, no shadows.
That's the hopes. And as an old groomer, I couldn't concur with you more.
Go ahead, John.
So, since they're not dark sky compliant, have you, did you look into dark sky compliant lights?
I actually reached out to the provider. He got very adamant with me when the term "dark sky" came out. He wanted to be sure that everybody understood that dark sky is really a trade name, and that we really should be using the term "full cutoff." And he was pretty adamant about the fact these types of lights for this type of activity are not full cutoff, they can't be full cutoff, and the reflection, which would be resonating from the snow surface, makes it irrelevant anyways.
So, the next question is, the orientation of the light and the projection of the light, will they be going down the side and facing into the mountain so that they aren't facing out into the hills where people live?
Yeah, so the obvious intent here is to have the lights directed in the area that they need to be, that being the terrain. And if you actually look at the accessories which are sold with this, one of the things is an aiming laser, to be able to aim the light to where you need it during daytime, so that we're ensured that we're getting maximum coverage without blasting it up into the sky.
So, funky question here. Will there be any color variations for special events or anything of that nature?
Not to my knowledge. These do not have that capability.
Okay, so basically, what the town manager is asking for is that we would support this project moving ahead. So, we could do that tonight, or we can request that this be held for some sort of public hearing, so that the abutters would be notified. So, what are your feelings on those two issues? Go ahead, Peter.
The idea that this area has been lit before, to me, ends up saying that there really is very little change, other than, I believe, what is being stated, is that there's going to be uniform more, or more uniform lighting on the skiing surface. There was discussion of the base area, which might be used for special events, but that, too, is not going to be any different during the ski season than it would be at other times. And you also would find that the issue of dark sky compliance at other seasons of the year will be much less, because it is not reflective. When the ground is brown, you aren't going to have that kind of reflection off the snow. So, I don't really see any issues with this particular project.
And the area, I happen to know from personal experience that they've had lights over there since the '40s. So, anyway.
Spotty. It was very spotty.
Anyone else?
As a safety issue, the more trails that they have lit at night with all those kids on them, they're spreading them out when they go downhill, so it will be safer for the kids and the adults who are skiing.
I think that we've had lights there since the '40s. I think these lights are going to be an order of magnitude brighter than anything you've ever had before. Bouncing off the snow in the summertime, wintertime, is going to really show up just about anywhere you want to look from town. I don't want to stand in the way of progress, which appears to be what's going on, but I intend to abstain if this comes to a vote to recommend, or to approve, or to move to a public hearing. I just feel uncomfortable with this.
Understood.
Okay, anyone else?
One more odd question. Do you know if the ski teams are going to be able to use both trails to ski under the lights, to race under the lights? Can they do that? Or is it only daytime?
So, that's going to be a policy question going forward. One of the purposes of the Twister Trail was specifically designed for ski racing. So, the hopes are that, you know, these races will take place on the Twister Trail as it was designed, so that we can provide public skiing to the community on the main trail. Now, if for some reason they wanted to race on the main trail, I would absolutely push that the Twister Trail and the other trails be available for public usage. But to take both of the trails and use them for ski racing, that would be a really hard sell, and it'd have to be quite an event to do that.
No, I meant under the lights.
Even under the lights.
Yeah, but have they been doing it under the lights now, the racing?
I don't know.
Oh, okay.
I can't answer that question.
I don't think they've had a night race yet. Doesn't mean they won't.
Correct.
It's an unusual thing for the kids in New England to have night races. I can think of one or two.
Okay, any other comments? If not, entertain a motion.
I would move that we allow this project to move forward.
I second that.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to allow the project to move forward. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? And one of...
Two abstentions. I'll abstain, too.
Two abstentions. Okay. Okay, Jim, thank you very much.
Thank you all. Have a great night.
Yeah, okay. Okay, on to the next item. It's your turn.
Well, there's still people here.
Concept review, Michelle Hansen and Jordy Hutchinson, design review.
So, just for the board's memory, this came to you previously as a concept. Since the concept, they proceeded to the zoning board and have the density bonus they need. Tonight is just, with that density number satisfied, coming back for a revised concept, so that the board can chime in. Before Chris goes through his presentation, I'm getting this out of the way, because I have to take notes tonight. My recommendation for the board is to recommend that the applicant, when they're ready, submit for a new TRC prior to coming back for full application.
Great.
So, we won't be spending a great deal of time on this tonight?
Well, that's up to Chris, but procedurally, there's no need for a lot of time.
I think that was a directive and not a question.
Okay, go ahead.
So, again, for the record, my name is Christopher Berry. I'm with Berry Surveying and Engineering. Just to remind the board of where we started and where we are today. We came before the board on a preliminary basis with quite a bit of geo-referenced information for a concept to develop. Three parcels of land, one parcel, or one group of parcels, which is the focus of tonight's conversation, was for a mobile home housing park, which we would develop in the Pine Hill area. And that was to contain approximately 90 units at the concept level discussion. And then, on a second parcel of land, which we'll see in about a month or two before the board, a multifamily housing project that, again, had about 90 units of multifamily housing on a separate parcel of land with a separate access point. Since that time, we've gone to the ZBA and received the required relief that would be needed to conduct both of those projects. And so, we have undertaken land surveying, soils mapping, and full engineering design of both of those projects. As part of the last preliminary review, I thought I understood the board that they wanted to see this one more time on a preliminary basis while we were in the middle of the design process, so that you could provide additional input as may be required as part of the full functional design. And so, that's really the purpose of why I'm here tonight. I'm not looking for approval of anything. We wanted to sort of bring you up to speed on where we were with the project, what sort of project items that we've come up with with the survey and the project design, and how we intend to deal with them as it relates to both your zoning and your subdivision requirements. So, I provided a brief plan package for you. The first page is the overview of the two sites, which we would have the 90 units be situated on. This is real-time wetlands delineations, real-time topographic features to include a small section of 25% slopes. And again, all of the wetlands, as I point out in my narrative, are poorly drained wetlands. There are no very poorly drained wetlands on these two particular parcels. And the stream that's at the base of the hill is an intermittent stream. It is not a perennial stream. And that's important when you compare this development design against your underlying zoning requirements. So, the next couple of pages in the packet that I submitted, is a more detailed look at the existing conditions of the site, the full perimeter boundary, and how the project design would relate to those topographic features. So, if we skip ahead to the overview subdivision page, I would just point out a few of the key differences between our preliminary design, which we discussed with the board originally, and the design that we have in front of you tonight. Originally, the access point onto 109A was further south. The reason for that originally was to try and take advantage of an upland island to gain access through an upland area.
Sheet is that.
This is the overview subdivision page sheet. This plan set isn't numbered. So, the reason for the shift is the offset distance required for the intersection with the beach road across the street, and trying to increase that separation distance between those roads from a safety standpoint on the major highway. This moving of this road also allows for much better site distance to the south, though it does create a wetland impact. We are doing it in the most narrow spot, practical, when you consider those safety features, and we would design the crossing using best management practices. This is a conservation subdivision in the underlying zone. The parcel is less than 50 acres, and so a 50-foot perimeter buffer is designed and respected as part of the project design. Each one of the housing units is designed outside of that 50-foot buffer, so we will not have housing units that are encumbered by the 50-foot buffer itself. The design of the subdivision has changed slightly. It's still in a looping format, but...
Just the 50-foot buffer, so the lots don't have to meet it, just the dwelling?
Well, the way your ordinance reads, the dwellings, that's correct. The dwellings have to meet it, but we've specifically designed this subdivision so that the lots also meet it.
Okay.
So that no individual landowner has to worry about whether they have a buffer, a 50-foot buffer on their property or not.
Okay, thank you.
They're free to utilize all of the space, with a couple of minor exceptions that I'll talk about.
So, what do you call them, these homes? What do you call them, these?
What do you mean, what am I calling them?
You call them, you use the phrase "mobile home," manufactured home?
It's a manufactured housing park, yep. And so, these would be pre-manufactured off-site, and then placed on either the proposed slab or foundation, depending on the slope that which we're trying to build on, and the adjacent grade against the proposed street. grade against the proposed street. So, the roadway, again, is still designed in a looping fashion, but it has a little bit more character to it. Really, the character is based around dodging environmentally sensitive areas, such as some steep slopes, wetlands, and the wetlands buffer, so that there's no road component of the subdivision that is within 50 feet of the wetlands, which is a component of your wetlands overlay district. Additionally, there are parts of some lots that have the 25-foot buffer and the 30-foot structural setback for wetlands on the lots, but we are able to develop the lots without impeding those setbacks and buffers. And the primary focus of the redesign was to reduce the number of units that have those impingements on them. Formerly, we had an accessway that was proposed down to the second portion of 109A. We have since worked out an agreement with the underlying Corporation of Eastern Propane to allow our secondary access and means of egress for life safety code to go through that particular project site. That provides a really good advantage to us from a topographic standpoint, there's a lot less slope between this project site and the eastern site versus our site and the lower section of Route 109A. Additionally, it removes one wetland crossing in the intersection of Route 109A, and the trade-off there is that there would be a condition used for a roadway to go through the 50-foot setback to two small, isolated wetlands there at the center, for the sole purpose of providing a secondary access. Buffer impact is preferred over direct wetlands and intermittent stream impacts, especially given the fact that this area is steeper than the area that we're proposing to develop. We have matured the sewage disposal system design, we're able to fit two sewage disposal systems out in the southern section of the property, and we're able to meet the state's requirements for the sewage loading systems. Again, this project would be serviced by public water, and the intent is to design a system that would be acceptable for the Department of Public Works or the Utilities Commission to review and inspect our systems on a yearly basis. The rest of the detail within the plan set basically blows up certain areas of the proposed manufactured housing areas to show the level of detail that's not seen on the overall scope of the 100.
So, so what's the life expectancy of those systems?
So, we're designing them to be rather robust, we would expect a life expectancy of 30, 40 years. The system that we're proposing is known as the GST system, and it is a hybrid system, mostly made up of the original pipe-and-stone style designs. In addition to that, we're designing a pretreatment system at each home site, so that the effluent that is sent to these effluent disposal systems is pretreated prior to getting to the, to the system. We're able to do that because this entire system would be on a force main and not on a gravity line, so we're able to force main all of the effluent to one location, and then douse these fields in a systematic manner, so that not one field is getting all of the dosing at one time. We're able to spread the load out over the entire site using that methodology. And again, we are proposing pretreatment, pretreatment methods to reduce the strength of the effluent going to the, to the fields. You see that a lot used on water bodies, lakes, rivers, things of that nature. We're doing it here to prolong the length of time that our field has for its lifespan.
Chris, going back to your, to the access over to the Eastern Propane, is that going to be gated?
Yes, sir.
So, only for emergency vehicles to go in and out, or be for the residents to be able to use?
We're not proposing full access, it would only be for emergency vehicles. We don't want our residents to take that as their, their access through the industrial area, so it would just be designed for emergency vehicles. We haven't worked out the details of that, but I would likely propose to my applicants and the owners of Eastern that that be gated, and that there be a knox box on the gate.
Further question regarding access, your access onto 109A, looks like it's pretty close to Beach Pond Road.
It is.
Have you been, have you talked to NHDOT regarding this design, and have they made any suggestions regarding Beach Pond Road?
Nothing specific with DOT, meaning I have not filed an application with them. The modification in where I've located the road has been, my past experience with DOT is, if you cannot line up an intersection properly, which in this case, we cannot, that it needs to be offset, in this case, at least 200 feet, if not a greater distance. And so, that's the offset that's chosen here. If I were to choose a larger offset, then my site distance to the south starts to become imperative.
So, your 200-foot, your, your current access is optimum?
Yes.
For site distance, and also for DOT requirements?
Yes, sir.
It's getting late, thank you.
Yes. So, really, this is a brief update as to where we started and where we are today. We're still under active design, we still have stormwater management that we need to prepare. The current design methodology is, given how dense the area of development is on the site, that we would have a closed drainage system. It'd be piped to various low-impact development devices, either a gravel wetland, most likely one or two gravel wetlands, and then a mix of small rain gardens to infiltrate and treat stormwater prior to discharge to the riverland flow.
And what state approvals do you need?
Just about all of them. So, we would need an alteration of terrain permit, we're going to need a state subdivision permit, we're going to need a state septic permit, we're going to need a wetlands permit, and we will need a federal NPT's permit, very similar to a permit that one of the former applicants had, it's a different schedule, but it's a federal permit that requires us to review historical natural items on site and rare and endangered species on site.
Okay, and also the DOT approval?
Yes, yep.
Yeah, right.
DOT is almost the least of my concerns, but yes, yep.
Okay, so you have a way to go.
There's a statement.
Have you chosen a manufacturer for the manufactured homes?
I don't have the answer to that. Not, not yet.
Okay, but nothing yet.
Okay, go ahead, one.
What do you anticipate the, the maximum grade on the road to be?
Right now, it's, the maximum grade is 8% or less. The town prescribes a roadway of 10% or less, based on how the separation between these units lay out, is why I've chosen to try and keep the grade of the road at 8% or less.
And when you have a 10-foot drop across the house site, you're proposing to have a concrete?
So, in that particular case, we would actually propose a foundation. So, instead of placing the manufactured house on a slab, as we ordinarily would, we would place it on a foundation, so that the foundation wall acts as a retaining wall over that grade.
And not piers?
Not piers, no.
So, how many of these will have the foundations, then?
Undetermined at the moment.
Okay.
Are we talking 10? Are we talking?
Quite a few, I think.
Yeah, it will be quite, yeah, quite a few of them will have full foundations. Because of the way I've designed the roadway to try and take advantage of the topography on site, if you were to look at my road profile that we've got basically designed, you'll see it matches the existing grade pretty closely, but because the road profile runs along the contour, my structures sit perpendicular to that contour. So, as she's astutely pointed out, they cross multiple contour lines, and so, specifically the lots that are on the downhill side, we would take advantage of a foundation to basically make that grade up within the structure, and you would have a walkout feature at the back of that structure, where somebody could access the back of their property and the back of the structure, as well as potentially inside the structure. But I couldn't tell you whether or not 50 of the 90 are like that.
Okay. Other questions or comments?
I think you answered most of mine, I was just wondering about the state approvals, and you mentioned the stormwater management, and we'd also need something from Eastern Propane if you're crossing here.
Yes, and we're working on a separate application with them for another project that they're doing. It would likely be, they would likely coincide with one another, so that those agreements would be worked out at the same time.
Okay.
But it would be ratified to writing and submitted to the board.
Okay.
Yes.
I like your propane way, street, street name.
You know, it's, it's very common that I ask my applicants for road names, they fall short, and so, I make them up on my own.
Okay, anyone else have any comments?
I think it became safer and way more interesting, since you had to pay attention to the wetlands and the contours.
It forced creativity, yep.
Okay.
Thank you for everybody's time.
Well, thank you.
Enjoy your night.
All right, you too. Okay. I think that was pretty much it, right? I'm in the inclusionary zoning ADU, and lots with no frontage, they're waiting for...
Just waiting for review, anticipating having those ready for the 18th. The other thing I want to bring on the 18th will be something that looks like warrant articles, so the board is comfortable with where you are, as far as being prepared and then scheduling public hearings, probably second meeting in November.
Okay. All right, okay, so, there are no minutes, you know, we did get minutes from the combined...
I sent those to you, yeah.
Yeah, I know, but it's not on the agenda, so we'll deal with that next time.
We'll deal with the joint and the last meeting, yes. I wasn't sure how long anything was going to go tonight, so...
Yeah, right, okay.
And I don't know if there's public comment.
Yeah, right. Public comments? Okay, all right, entertain a motion to adjourn?
Removed.
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much, folks.